All right, good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you for being here tonight. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
I'm here as well.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Present.
Councilmember Piscuali.
Here.
All right, this time we'll all stand. We're going to have an invocation today from Pastor Wang Zhong. He is the pastor of the Mong Christian Church on B Street in Yuba City, and that will be followed by a pledge of allegiance of the flag led by me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yarong kuichong tai chao ha kuichao ku pei xing shuotla in Mong. Just want to give thanks and welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. In the Mong culture, you guys are the village chief, and we are the citizens of the city. And so it's my honor tonight, being a pastor of a Mong local church here, just to pray for us. Our scripture tells us to pray for our leaders. And so I'm more than happy to pray for you guys tonight. Let's join us in prayer. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for creation, giving us this wonderful planet. We also give you thanks for the many people around the world. We give you thanks for this great country, state, and this beautiful city. With different circumstances, I am able to be here today from another country, but today I am a citizen of this country and a citizen of this wonderful city that you have blessed us with. Your scripture tells us that we should pray for our leaders. And so tonight, I want to lift our leaders up to you tonight in their meeting for the betterment of the great city of Yuba. And so just bless us tonight, bless the leaders as they share in the plans and in decisions that they are to make for the city. Protect them, give them wisdom and knowledge as they proceed with the meeting, even as they go home. May your protection be with them and all of us who are here and are citizens of the city as well. And so we ask you to bless our city, bless our leaders. All this I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any agenda modifications at all, gentlemen? Nothing? All right. This time, we're going to move on to item number one, and this is a recognition of Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month proclamation. I'd like to invite Sikh temple president Sarb Tiara and any temple directors to come down forward and join the council. All right. So this is the proclamation in a recognition of Seek Awareness and Appreciation Month, November 2024. Whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 100 years, and Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world. Today, there are more than 25,000 Sikhs worldwide and an estimated 500,000 Sikhs live in California, much of the largest concentration living in Yuba City, nicknamed Mini Punjab. Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, and have distinguished themselves by fostering great respect among all people through faith and service. The city of Yuba City has a significant population of Sikhs and is committed to respecting the heritage and religions of our diverse community. The city seeks to further embrace the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history of Sikh Americans. The Sikh temple, under the leadership of their president Sarb Tiara and their board of directors, some of whom are standing up here with us right now, will host the upcoming 45th Nagar Katan, which includes the annual Sikh parade. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council to hereby proclaim the month of November 24 to be Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month. There we go. Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything, sir?
Sure. First of all, I want to thank every one of you guys, especially the mayor and vice mayor. We've been going through a lot, trying to get new things done with the federal mandates and all that stuff, that permitting and all that stuff. It's been more difficult, and they've been helping. And get through the staff and everybody has gone through a lot of changes, and we're all learning. And we want to thank you for your help and to get us through that, and we're much closer to getting wrapped up. And we want to invite all of you. This is your event, our event, the 45th Nagar Katan. On the third, we want everybody there and show us in support. And any thing extra you guys can do to help, because due to the crowd and everything, we have made, you know, changes to the traffic, one-way traffic. Kent Chief is there, he's worked hard on it. And Maples, Sheriff, all these guys work hard with our staff. The management team that we have, TMI, they have made it a pamphlet that should make it easier for us going forward, and I wanted to bring that up to everybody, why we did get that delay, because we just did not have that pamphlet ready. So going forward, we will have that pamphlet. It would make it a lot easier for us getting our permitting issues and the maps set up, and Diane has those. I brought her copies of all that stuff. So, and I just want to thank every one of us that is in this board, and thank the Lord up there that we have another year to go and 45th annual parade this year. And our secretary is here, we've been waiting for him, but here he is. He got late. So, thank you very much.
All right, we have a request for everybody to come on down for a photo op. We'll go get in the back. That's where we do it. That's where we get back.
Oh, up here?
Yeah, you guys down in the front. The only people in the back is the council.
All right, right out in front if possible. All right. Panorama. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Very nice. All right, where they're going out, we're next to item number two is Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Ben at Public Works and Development Service, excuse me, hold on. Ben and staff, come on down.
Thank you.
All right. I didn't do it. Or you're the one that's counting then, right? I told you to wait in the truck. All right, code enforcement, these guys do a lot of work keeping our city clean, and some reminders for folks who forget to do what they need to do on their front yard and everywhere else. So we have a proclamation here for Code Enforcement Officers Week. Should be Code Enforcement Officers Year, in my opinion. You guys do a lot of good stuff. Okay, so here we go. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens in our community through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, and the environment. They have challenging, demanding jobs and often do not receive recognition for the work they do in improving quality of life for residents and businesses. In recent years, their role has expanded with jurisdictions relying on their expertise and training in dealing with the growing challenge of the unhoused and transient population. Code enforcement officers are dedicated to the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. They often have a highly visible role in the communities and regularly interact with the public, business owners, and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials. The city of Yuba City wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community. That's a no-brainer. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, mayor of the city of Yuba City, for a few more weeks, and on behalf of the entire city council do hereby proclaim the second week of October be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and call upon all its residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by those who serve as our code enforcement officers. Let's give them a hand.
You know, it's so well said. So thank you. Thank you, Eric Boone, for being here tonight. Also part of our team is Bruce and Lincoln Eden on our team. And so we're small but mighty. These teams are constantly impressed. It's just amazing for, there's never a dull day in the code enforcement world. And, but every day, it's last week, it was six 40-yard dumpsters of garbage that came out of the river bottoms to coordinating grants, to cleanup, in coordination with Salov across the city at various cleanup areas, and then just the miscellaneous vacant buildings to you name it, try to clean up the blight across the city. And it's really those efforts that keep the city clean, and you guys do a great job. Thank you.
I guess I'll just say it's great being part of this team. We have a great staff at the city, and I love working here.
Pressure's on.
Pressure's on. I also reflect the, it's a pleasure to work for the city of Yuba City as a code enforcement officer. I can say that in the last seven-plus years, the expectations have shifted so greatly. The addition of the homeless issues, the addition, well, going through COVID, the expectations for code enforcement through that. But we also realize that we've got great support from staff as well as council. So thank you.
I would just say, after being in this business for almost 30 years, I would say I'm just honored and lucky to be able to work with the code enforcement team we have. They're able to accomplish so much with the resources that we have, and I just thank you so much for all that you do for the city.
Absolutely. Okay, we got a photo op? I should, one of you guys hold. Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Item number three is a presentation from the Sutter County Memorial Museum Flood Exhibit, presented by Molly Bloom, Sutter County Museum Director and Curator. Welcome, Molly. Good to see you.
Yeah, nice to see you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city councilors, and thank you all for coming this evening. So I'm Molly Bloom. I'm the director at the Sutter County Museum, and that's just across the street here. So I'm really excited to share some updates on a project that I know is of interest to the city council and to the citizens of Yuba City. So thank you for the opportunity to come present tonight with some updates. So just a little overview about the museum. So the Sutter County Museum, our mission is to share local stories, to strengthen community bonds, to inspire celebration of our diverse cultural heritage, and to demonstrate how understanding the past prepares us for the future. And that doesn't totally say what we do. So when we're fully staffed, we're a staff of 2.5 full-time employees. And so what we do is that we operate a free, publicly accessible museum for the community. We manage the rental of Etl Hall, maintain professional standards of artifact conservation and care for over 20,000 objects and over 8,000 photographs that share the stories of the Yuba-Sutter community. We curate and maintain temporary and permanent exhibits on local history topics. We write, research, and track grants, provide free educational programs, and school and community group tours. This past year, we served about over 700 students as a part of that program. And we also recruit and manage volunteers, promote the museum, and develop community partnerships, and then also manage the museum gift shop filled with local products with many local vendors from the community. And we have a little bit of a unique organizational structure. So we are a Department of Sutter County, but then we also have our nonprofit Museum Association. And so it's truly a partnership to make the museum run every day. So our budget with Sutter County, we're our own independent department with our own budget. So that covers our staff salaries and benefits, things like utilities, building and ground maintenance, and then other basic business expenses like insurance, postage, printing, things like that. And then the Museum Association, our nonprofit, they fundraise to support a lot of the things that you see when you go into the museum, such as our temporary exhibits, replacing and updating our permanent exhibits, our educational public programs, field trips, the gift shop, marketing and public relations, the Artisan Community Garden, which just as of today added a brand-new mural made by local artist Madeline Joan Templeton, and then our membership program. So tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about our exciting flood exhibit project. So I'm going to go through a project overview, some of the learning and experience goals that we hope to meet with this exhibit, and then get into some of the content overview, the floor plan and concept design, and some visualizations to show you what the gallery could look like. We also plan to have some proposed points of engagements to have it be a very interactive experience for people who visit, and then some of the partnerships and next steps. So the project does actually go before 2023, because for years, the community has been wanting to add a more substantial permanent flood exhibit to the Sutter County Museum. And the city council has invested, starting in about, I don't know, 2016, 2017, about $15,000 into supporting this project. So I'm very excited that it's finally here. And in 2023, the museum was awarded a $383,000 and some change grant in funding from the California Museum Grant Program administered by the Natural Resources Agency. And so this project is to renovate and redesign the museum's middle galleries with content on the Nisanon, the Gold Rush and westward expansion, and local flood history. And so you'll hear me refer to it as the middle galleries a few times in this presentation. That's because it's just in the middle of the museum. And so you'll see we have some pretty lofty goals for this space. I'll let you keep in mind that it's about 748 square feet. So we're really excited with all the ways that we're planning to pack some content in there and make every inch count. And then later phases of this project will include producing artifact trunks related to revitalized exhibits with curriculum to be utilized by teachers off-site in classrooms. And then we'll also be developing some educational field trip tours that align directly with the renovated exhibits to help us support our local schools and teachers. So the overview for the exhibit is to cover those three topics that I mentioned. But the through line between those topics, because at first glance, they might seem diverse and different, but the through line is really that it's about the, you know, deeply informed by the personal experiences of community members, both past and present, and how Yuba-Sutter has evolved based on the changing relationship between people and the landscape. So all of these topics, the through line is really about the interaction between humans and the landscape, and how we explore things like resilience, reciprocity between humans and the land they call home, the stewardship of that land, and then recovery as well. So some of our learning goals are to create a sense of excitement, trust, insight, inspiration, and curiosity around local history, for visitors to leave with a clear understanding of how those three key topics have determined the evolution and future of Yuba and Sutter counties, to underscore how all community members are connected to and contribute to our local areas, past, present, and future, and then to encourage further study in those topics as well. And in terms of what we want visitors to experience, which is a little different from what we want them to learn, is we really want to make sure that we're allowing for both individual and group learning moments and opportunities that can help reinforce how all visitors are contributing to local history. We also want to provide a variety of different types of experiences, and then offer learning opportunities, interactive components that really resonate with different age levels and learning styles. So there really will be something for everyone to enjoy and explore, no matter if you're a five-year-old or a lifelong learner. And for our content overview, again, we hope that we will be able to fit all of these in, but we hope, you know, to do the best we can with the available space of that 750 square feet. But so this exhibit will explore the First Peoples and past lifeways, as well as a changing life way with the influx of European settlers and the population boom of the Gold Rush, and then some exploration of First Peoples of the present. Then we'll also be looking at the westward expansion and the Gold Rush, mining and the early impacts of that on landscape and society, and then moving into a large section on historic floods, and then risk and resilience to leave people with a sense of how you can contribute today and how you can take what you've learned home with you. And so this is that 748 square feet of space I was talking about with the floor plan. Just to give you a sense of that space, so the First Peoples exhibit will be where the current Nisanon exhibit is in the museum, and then we'll be expanding those areas on the Gold Rush and then creating a brand-new flood exhibit. So the room will have some cohesion, and it'll all be located in this one space for visitors to enjoy and explore. And then this is another image of that floor plan in 3D. So you'll also see, you know, some of those openings and some of the ways that people will be navigating through the space. Then we get into some of the elevations, which show us a little bit of the color. So this is looking toward the First Peoples exhibit. And so the exhibit designers, you know, they really worked with us. We had some opportunities for community feedback already. This is another presentation where I'm glad to be getting some feedback from the community. But they wanted to do some creative things like using white oak to call to the Native Valley oak of this area, and so incorporating in some of the materials use some things that really tie to Yuba-Sutter and Yuba City. Then we're also looking one way at the westward expansion and Gold Rush. So this will be a wall of flip panels that people will be able to open. So it's basically a photo mural, but those, it kind of layers in the different opportunities for activity. So some of those panels will be able to open the smaller ones, and they might have objects behind them, or they might have prompts, or questions, or historic photographs from our collection. So again, lots of opportunities for people to engage and explore. And so this is the wall that, if you're familiar with the museum, is up against the agricultural wing of the museum. This is looking at the flood exhibit. So you can see it mirrors the design that we saw on the First Peoples exhibit, again, to make the room feel cohesive. But another thing that's happening is using color to help distinguish some of those zones, so that will help people navigate the space. So even though it won't feel too disparate to be in different sections of the exhibit, the color will help signify you're kind of looking at a different content area. And so we see things like, you know, this is a concept design, so it might, not all the pictures are set. These are just examples of what it could look like. But we plan to have some photos, perhaps maps, graphics, images on the walls. And then that front part, which we'll get into a little bit later, is a, it's called a rail. So it's sort of like a countertop that will have some interactive activities and things for people to explore as they go through the space. And then this is the final wall, looking back at the main gallery, which is where we have our temporary exhibits currently, if you're familiar with the museum. And so you'll see some sort of little feedback activity. I'm going to try to, oh, yeah. So you'll see a little area for a feedback activity. So we envision something where people would have prompts and be able to leave some comment cards, maybe about what they learned, or ideas they're going to take with them, or maybe sharing some of their own flood, fire, Gold Rush stories, maybe Gold Rush stories. And then this is the part where I think you can really see what it looks like as we get into the gallery visualizations. So again, with this concept design, you can see what it might look like when we have it populated, filled with people. You can get a sense of that kind of interpretive rail I was talking about that will have some interactive activities there. This flip panel wall that we talked about, where people will be able to open and interact and view objects or additional information. And then we haven't talked much about it, but the idea for the final version would be to also have this central map that would have some sort of components for interactivity. So we've been looking at things like projecting different images over it, maybe buttons along the side, so people could kind of play different programs that would help teach a little more about the changing landscape or about the flow of water during different historic flooding events. And this side is looking a little more at that westward expansion and Gold Rush wall. But it also points out another element of this design, which is this idea of this inlaid floor, some sort of special floor with graphics that we hope would be in the final version of this exhibit. And it would include the Greater Yuba River watershed. And so it gives a sense of the way the water would flow. But what I really love about it is that it's something that even if you're really little and you can't reach the counters, even a really young kid would be able to explore something in the exhibit. And then it would also be a teaching tool kind of for us when we're giving tours of the museum, we're bringing out-of-town visitors here. And it will really help, we hope that this, as well as the central map, would really help people navigate, like where we are, where we're located. Because when you're just standing in a museum, you know, you could be anywhere. But this will help locate visitors really to here. And then this is looking back at the Nisanon exhibit side. And so I wanted to just point out a couple things. So this really gives us some good examples of some of those interactives I was talking about. You know, this idea of some natural resources, things that would be used by the First Peoples of the area, the Nisanon. This basket idea is an interactive, for an interactive weaving display where there'd be some sort of structure of a basket, and then people could weave along the outside to mimic kind of the unique weaving styles that are done in this area in historic basketry and present-day basketry. And then things like flip books, other little activities where people could, again, have more information. So we have a lot of information to cram in. The word counts are tight. The images we can use are limited, just in number. But these are some clever ways with flip books and things like that to add a little more content along the way. And so some of those proposed points of engagement I mentioned, like the natural resources and the basket weaving, and then that flip panel. But we also have ideas about adding like a slide viewer of Yuba-Sutter floods. We have so many wonderful historic photographs of, you know, the community, and we have many of local flood events. And so we like to have, you know, some slides that people could view, and that almost becomes like a historic object in and of itself by having a slide viewer. And then the flood of 1955, kind of family scrapbook. It can be made to look like a treasured family heirloom filled with some of the photographs and newspaper articles, letters, documents that we have in our collection that could show people a little more detail about, you know, the very historic and well-known flood of 1955. Then we also have lots of video and audio recordings of local floods, and so we want to have a viewer where people could maybe listen on a receiver or view on a tablet to see some of that content as well. And then also, as we think about resilience and what people can take away, these slide panel activity where people could maybe look at a disaster scenario and slide over to see solutions, or ideas, solutions, or ideas, or ways that they could prepare. So that just brings people right up to present day as they go through the exhibit. And then that feedback and reflection station I mentioned earlier, where people leave comments about what they learned, or respond to prompts about how they could plan, or some of their own personal stories. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about partnerships. As I've mentioned, you know, we are a small museum, but we're fortunate through this project to have a substantial budget to bring this exhibit to fruition, and work with professional exhibit designers who are well-known around the world, and professional exhibit fabricators who are located in the Bay Area, which saves us a little on some of the transportation costs. And so the fabricators, they build the exhibits, they work with artists and museums like us to build very complex, unique, specific things. Every time they do this, they're creating a new, they don't have templates, you know, they're creating something new, special, just for us. And so we're really fortunate to have a healthy budget to make this happen. So thanks to that grant I mentioned from the California Natural Resources Agency, that covers about $225,000 toward this project in terms of the actual exhibit design and fabrication. And then the city of Yuba City has generously given $15,000 in past years to support this project that will help us bring this to becoming reality. And then additionally, there was $15,000 from previous funding from Subufka and the United Auburn Indian Community of the Auburn Rancheria, that I think actually maybe was in partnership with the city as well, that's also available for this project. And then the Sutter County Museum Association, our nonprofit that I mentioned, they are also contributing about $45,000, possibly more, for this exhibit. And so that really comes from the community. Those are the memberships that people buy, those are the gift shop purchases that people make, that's donations dropped in the donation box, and for people who attend our annual fundraiser Trees and Traditions, and participate in other fundraising activities throughout the year. So unfortunately, I did just want to mention that the budget doesn't include the two remaining elements that we hope would, we would be able to fundraise and include in a later phase of that central map and the proposed floor. But luckily, you know, the rest of it is going to be really cohesive and get to happen all at once for the community while we work on the next phase of the project and bringing the rest of the exhibit here. And then I also wanted to take some time to thank a lot of the project volunteers. We have a lot of people in the community who have been dedicating their time for this project. You know, people who are professionals in emergency management, Chuck Smith, local flood history expert, and now editor of the Appeal Democrat, and then our retired assistant curator, Cheryl Simmons, who is our expert in collections, who's had worked at the museum for over 20 years when she retired, Phyllis Smith, our president of the museum association, and David Ruby Alice, retired professor of local history from Yuba College. And so we've had a lot of people, and many, many more, but there are just a few people I wanted to mention as well for their work on bringing this project and making sure that our content is really solid and able to serve the community. Then in terms of next steps, you know, I'm in the feedback phase, so I've been doing a few presentations like this, and so we've had opportunities at the museum and elsewhere for people to give feedback about the project. And we're moving into starting to really develop that content and locking that down as, and then the plans will be finalized, the exhibit will be fabricated, built, it will be installed in the museum, and then we'll have a grand opening. So that will be something to look forward to, and that, we expect that that will happen before the museum's 50th anniversary, which is April 2025. So stay tuned, it's coming soon, and there will be lots more, lots of new, great things for people to enjoy. And then, as I mentioned earlier, in the later phase of the project, we plan to be developing those school and field trip programs. So we're halfway through this three-year project, and so there will be more to see, but I'm really excited that the exhibit is coming soon, and it will be here for everyone to enjoy. So thank you again for your time and for letting me talk for so long tonight.
Thank you very much, Molly. Any comments or questions or anything?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that presentation, Molly. I understand that you have an event coming up in December. Would you like to talk about that?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Yeah, so I mentioned a little bit about some of the fundraisers that the Sutter County Museum Association puts on. So on December 2nd, sorry, December 6th, we will have our annual Trees and Traditions fundraiser, which is our big fundraiser of the year, and so that's a night of, let's see, well, raffle, auction, silent auction, live auction, food, drinks, a chance to be merry, local music, live music. And so we hope people will consider joining us. Tickets will be on sale in November, and this is our annual fundraiser, and proceeds from this help support our exhibits and programs like what we're talking about today. So yeah, thank you for that question.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to do item number four, Sam Brandon Park update.
We are here to give you a quick Sam Brandon update. My name is Ann Gillan, I'm the Community Services Director, so I'm going to give you an update on what Parks has been doing. So Parks goes out, we have daily things that we do. So on a daily basis, we have routine maintenance, they do safety inspections on all the amenities out there. We do have security going by at dusk every night to make sure that the restrooms are closed, and that the skate park and the pickleball courts are cleared. We have a brand-new pole light by the restrooms, and we are working with PD on improving and working on some new signage out there. And then one other thing we're doing is we're looking into maybe leasing out part of the grass area that kind of butts up against Givicki Ford back there. And, but, it hasn't been, it is zoned as a public facilities district, so it's geared more towards civic-related facilities and other public uses. So it's not really for commercial uses, so we're kind of looking in the process of rezoning and stuff and seeing what that's all about, what it takes to do that. And that's about it for Parks.
To add about with code enforcement related to it, it's really, when I checked in with the team recently, the recent activity with grant funds, we coordinated the cleanup along the railroad tracks recently to clean up some of the blight. Daily, we drive, we drive up and down Gray Avenue looking for any sort of vendors or any sort of issues, and then responding promptly. And so really, we haven't had any reported vendor issues lately at the site. Not that that doesn't occur, but if they do, please let us know, and we'll try to flex our hours or try to, try to work to identify that and work through it. And then, you know, occasionally, we get, in coordination with PD, we respond to maybe some sort of activity in the parking lot that needs to be investigated that we look into. But over the last few weeks, that's really been the big thing, is cleaning up along the railroad track area, and then just being proactive with any cases.
Evening, Council, Mayor. From the PD end, we've done since September 1st about 56 security checks of the park, and those are like the ones that we call out with dispatch. That doesn't include traffic stops we conduct in the parking lot, pedestrian contacts in the park and in front of the park. We've made seven arrests for various violations and issued nine citations. Kind of the barometer for me that things are getting better at Sam Brandon, knock on, I think this is real wood. My email and voicemail box are not blowing up, so that's a good thing. So any questions for the PD front of things?
Up for the PD, I do for Ann.
Go ahead.
I'm not letting you off the hook.
Yes.
You know, just curious, because it looks like whenever I go by there, pickleball courts are used. Do you guys track usage for both the pickleball and the bocce ball courts at all?
No, we don't really track. Dylan does. Pickleball, we don't track pickleball, but we, it is used every night, Dylan? Yeah. And then when's the pickleball club out there, like, every night?
Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning.
Okay, so Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning, the pickleball club uses it, and then in the evenings, there's just groups of people that come out every night, usually the same people come out and use them every night, so they're used a lot. Bocce ball, I haven't, we haven't really seen too much usage on that yet, but pickleball gets used every day of the week.
And how about, I know that we invested nicely in the bathrooms. Any issues with vandalism there yet?
Nope, not so far.
That's awesome.
Yep.
Perfect.
At the beginning, we had a little rough spout, but then got that figured out. And then, like I said, we have the security going out every night and making sure that it's locked. It is automatic lock, but there were things you could do to keep it from locking, so security's making sure it's locked every night.
Excellent. Thanks.
Through the mayor. Thanks for those questions, Mark. It's right in the middle of my district, so I have a vested, real vested interest in this. I've been by several times, and the pickleball thing is contagious. They, people, they've got time set that they rotate in and out all the time, very, very. I wish we had more pickleball facilities. It'd go over really well. I've seen the police officers, I've stopped, I've talked with them, the presence is there now, and they see it. I was speaking with some of the pickleballers when I walked on court, and they, they saw, they saw a very improved aspect of controlling that clientele, let's say, that frequents the park. But I haven't seen a lot either about the bocce balls a whole lot, and I go by there three, four times a day. So no, it's improving. Thank you. Thank you, PD chief. It's, you're making a difference, and so...
Well, I know the Parks guys work really hard out there, so...
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. We will move on. To public communications, item number five, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. I have one speaker card with advance, Kristy Macy. She's not here. We'll go with the other one, Jeff Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council. I wanted to come out tonight, but I'm really glad that I did. I didn't know code enforcement was going to be honored, and as you know, Saylove works a lot with code enforcement, and probably five years ago, code enforcement didn't quite know what to think of Saylove and what it was all about, and probably neither did a lot of the people in Yuba City here. And as we've grown, so has Yuba City, our relationship with Yuba City has grown, and all of the city supports Saylove very well, and we really, really appreciate it. I was unaware last meeting that there was some finance thing come up on the budget, and we really appreciate that it was passed. I heard some comments, I wasn't aware, like I said, and I went back and listened to the meeting, and I understand there was some concern because you had just supported our fundraiser, which we very much appreciate you guys coming out to the dinner and supporting. But I just wanted to come in here tonight and say thank you to each and every one of you. The money will be used for very good purposes here in Yuba City, and we're also going to go after Yuba County and try to receive some funds there. As you know, Saylove has grown, and we have a lot of expenses as our fleet has grown and everything else, so we truly, truly, you know, need and appreciate the funds that Yuba City provided for us, and just wanted to thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Jeff. Anybody else care to speak on anything? All right, we'll close that, and we'll go on to do the consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Any comments from the public on the consent calendar items six through nine? Seeing none, we can come back to the council for comment and/or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve consent calendar six through nine.
Second.
First and a second to approve consent calendar items six through nine, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, passed unanimously, that's good. On to number 10, business items, landscape maintenance district number one, zone of benefit B.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do I have property in this area? Do I need to recruise myself?
Yes, sir. See you in a minute.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Josh and I are here tonight to talk about landscape maintenance district number one, zone of benefit B. Zone B, as we'll call it, was born in Urporn, created in 1990. You'll see, you'll see the black outline, this is the district outline, it is in the south part of town, so it also interacts with the city limit line. So that's the district, and then the green areas are the landscaped areas within the district. The main areas are Garden Highway, Railroad Avenue, and then Bog Road. The purpose of Zone B is to provide funding for landscaping and irrigation, drainage systems, and walls and fencing, as well as entryway monuments and the fountain. When Zone B was formed in 1990, the annual cost to maintain the area per residence was set at $29.50. COLAs, or cost of living adjustments, were not included in the Zone B formation documents. This is the only district, both Zone A and B, that do not have COLAs in their documents. All the districts created after this one had COLAs in their documentation. If we took $19.90 and put it into $20.24, it would go from $29.50 to $71.24. And since the rates cannot be increased, we had, have, we have had to reduce the level of maintenance in the area. These are a few examples. These are both on Railroad Avenue, just a lot of overgrowth, as well as the fountain here, that's on the corner of Shanghai and Garden Highway. Over the last 16 years at least, sorry, the city has tried to address the problem of the funding shortfall. In 2008, the city went through the Prop 218 process to try to increase the budget. The majority vote was not received, so the rates had to stay the same. We did pull up the results of that, 892 ballots were received, 238 votes voted yes, and 654 voted no. With the Prop 218 process, it has to be over 50% yes to pass, so obviously, that was a big difference. So it was about 24% yes. In 2020, staff sent out letters to all property owners and residents, letting them know kind of the issues with the funding shortfall, and no responses were received at that time, so nothing came of that. This year, however, in August, we partnered with Saylove to send out letters. We got more of feedback on that, and we invited them to a community meeting in September, where Josh will talk about next.
Thanks, Council, for having us. So at our community meeting that was held a couple months ago, we had a pretty good turnout. From pictures, you can see about 40, 50 or so residents from the area showed up, which, compared to previous attempts, is a significant amount. Also, a big thanks to Saylove and their contribution to setting this up, and also providing delicious food for the dinner. Food is definitely a good attractor for meetings. So in that meeting, we discussed four key areas, one being what area is covered in the zone. A lot of the people in the district weren't aware of what the boundaries were, and what's actually maintained within the district. Another key component was answering questions about what is an LMD, and other questions that are typically asked about those, and then how, what is a Prop 218, and what's the process for moving forward with the Proposition 218. Then we talked about what the current level of maintenance is in the district, and what we would propose a future level of maintenance would be had we had the successful Proposition 218. And then lastly, we talked about current funding versus what the proposed funding would be if we were able to increase the rates. So I'll just dive into a few, or these four areas individually. So like Matty said, District 1B is the southern portion of the town, kind of in the Bog Shanghai area. I had a few more pictures here, so this is pointing to the railroad area. A lot of what you see here is weed overgrowth, some plant overgrowth in the sidewalks. This is a portion of Bog Road, where you can see more of weed overgrowth, some trees that aren't in the best health. Top right portion is Garden Highway, which... Top right portion is Garden Highway, which is the main concentration of the landscaping for the area. You see a couple of dead trees over here, a lot of overgrowth on this side. And a lot of, a lot of maintenance and upkeep for this area that we just don't have the resources or funds to handle. And then finally, on the bottom right is the fountain that Matty had mentioned, which I don't have a date for the last time it was in operation, but my best guess would be early to mid 2000s. Next, we talked about a lot of the frequently asked questions we'd receive when talking about Zone B. So first of all, when was it formed? It was formed in 1990 when the development of Bog and Shanghai area was occurring. What's covered? As Matty said, landscaping and irrigation, drainage system, including the detention basin on Garden Highway, or on Shanghai Ben, sorry, walls and fencing, entryway monuments, and the fountain. Why have maintenance levels decreased? And the simple answer to that would be maintenance costs have increased while the budget has stayed the same. So we've had to decrease the amount of maintenance to keep up, to keep a balanced budget in the district. Why not just increase the rates? Some people, or some residents aren't aware of the ins and outs and different laws that we have to follow. So the answer to that was there was no COLA factor written into the engineer's documents when the district was formed. Therefore, in order to increase the rates above the original dollar amount, you have to hold a proposition 218 hearing. Another question that came up was why not just use parks staff instead of contractors? And would that be more cost effective? The answer to that is we have around 14 or so full-time parks workers that maintain 19 facilities, including all city parks, city facilities like the water and wastewater plants, city hall, and other facilities. And they're, with the amount of staff that we have right now, they're pretty busy. They're, they're at their maximum capacity in terms of maintenance. Additionally, they are full-time employees with benefits. So their fully burden rate is pretty high compared to using a contractor. And with the contractor, we hold an RFP every three years to ensure we get the lowest bid and the highest quality of work. And then lastly, what is the proposition 218 process? And the next slide will go into kind of the four steps that constitute the proposition 218. And what it is, is a 1996 California constitution amendment that requires special districts to have, to have a positive vote in order to increase rates. So the first part of the proposition 18 being public notice, which is the city would be required to send notices to every single property owner within the district. And those notices need to include, need to include first, rate increase information. Then it would need to include a ballot in order for the property owner to be able to vote on said, or on proposed rate increase. And then finally, including a public hearing date. These notices would have to be sent out to the public 45 days minimum prior to the public hearing. Next, the public hearing process in which members of the district would be able to come in and voice their concerns or objections, protests, or any comments in favor of the district, or of the rate increase. And then at the end of the public hearing, the city clerk would tabulate the amount of ballots received and give the results of the, of the proposition 218 vote. Third, results and following actions. If more than 50% votes are achieved, the city can raise rates. If 50%, or if less than 50% is achieved, then the city cannot raise rates. An example I gave to some of the public was it really matters showing up to this. If you're in favor of having, adjusting the district, say, three people show up to vote. If two people voted yes, one person voted no, then it passes. Vice versa, two people vote no, one person votes yes, then it fails. And then lastly, if we receive a 50% or more, or 50% plus one vote in favor, the council has an opportunity to make a decision on whether or not to move forward with the process. Then we get into maintenance costs versus time. On this graph, in the red, you have the annual levy rate without inflation, which is the system that we're on now. The blue is annual levy rate just starting at the $29.50 in 1990 and then increasing each year with inflation. And then the green line is the consumer price index over time. So as you can see, in 1990, everything, the dollar amounts were the same. But as you move forward towards 2024, inflation has increased quite a bit up to the $74, or, sorry, $71.24 amount versus where we sit right now at $29.50. So, big question, what do you get and what don't you get if, what do you get if the Prop 218 moves forward? And what wouldn't you get if we continue the path we're going? So on our current path, without a proposition 218, the maintenance is limited to once a year tree and shrub trimming in the worst areas within the district, just to make sure that we're taking care of safety concerns and doing as much with the budget that we can. The remainder of the, the remainder of funding is divvied up through the rest of the year. And then we would only have safety responses to take care of anything throughout the year after that. Currently, we have weed abatement, which is primarily spraying for weeds and only pulling the largest weeds. And then what it looks like moving forward is maintenance levels decreasing annually as costs continue to rise. So if we were able to increase just for the CPI, we would have weekly tree and shrub pruning over the entire zone of benefit rather than just the problem areas. We would have weed abatement and weed pulling, so spraying and removing all weeds. Regulate, or regular irrigation fixes and maintenance. Currently, we aren't making any fixes to the irrigation system just because the funds don't allow it. As needed insulation of mulch, decomposed granite, or whatever ground cover may be applicable in the various areas in the district. And if it were to move forward, maintenance levels would be at a consistently higher level within the area. In terms of funding, on the left is the funding scenario for the current year. Currently, we have about $65,803 in revenue. The budgeted expenses are actually at $77,253. We may have to dial that back even further to try to remain under the $65,000 cap. So right now, we're looking at heading towards a deficit just to keep minimum levels of maintenance. With the CPI adjusted amount, we're looking at a budget of about $159,000. And I'll go into it on the next page. But using, increasing the amount of maintenance and, and being responsible with those funds. So on the bottom left, you have our graph, which shows the current funding. You have landscape maintenance is the brunt of it with about $34,000. Then you have water expenses at 24. Materials at about $9,000. And then administration costs and other. What we're proposing is if we were to get into CPI increase, the only items that would be increasing are then, are related to maintenance. So landscape maintenance would triple in budget from $34,000 to $103,000. Weed abatement would go up about two and a quarter times to $20,000. Water would remain the same. In fact, it may actually decrease over time as we get more irrigation fixes, fixing leaks, and then all other items, administration and other things would remain the same. So what we're proposing to do with the budget really isn't, is directly related to maintenance and maintenance only. With all of that being said, staff believes that moving forward with the proposition 218 process is the path towards improving the conditions of this area. With the fiscal impact, we think that the proposition 218 should be about $30,000. That includes consultant costs for material preparation, legal notices, and ballots, and then guidance on legal procedures, making sure that we're following all procedures to have successful proposition 218 process. City staff time for review, and then attorney, city attorney review as well. If successful, the budget would increase from 6,000, or $65,000 to about $159,000 annually. In terms of other options, council could direct staff to review costs further and provide council with options that would increase capital reserve funds. So in the previous slides, I was talking solely about landscape maintenance, bringing the trees, shrubs, ground cover, and everything back to high levels of maintenance. Other areas that are covered in the district include block walls, the fountain, and things like that. Having a healthy capital reserve would make sure that, say, a car hits a block wall, we have ample funding to make sure that it can be replaced in a timely manner. Same thing with the fountain, we can make it operational with those funds. Another option would be directing staff to also include Zone A in the proposition 218 process. Matty touched on this a little bit earlier. Zone A is up near the Walton area, south of Regency. It's the only other zone in the city that does not have a cost of living adjustment. And then the third option that we'd like to present is a combination of the two above options. With that, staff's recommendation is accepting the staff's presentation on the landscape maintenance district number one, zone of benefit B, and providing direction to staff with the next steps. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Through the mayor.
Yep.
Thanks, Josh. I got a few questions. I think you can, I'm confused. Zone A is where?
So Zone A is on Stabler Lane. I believe the northerly limit is Jamie Drive, south to, then do you know off the top of your head?
About Eden.
E- Eden, okay. North of that, you have Regency area, which is Zone Four, which is one of the most highly funded areas.
Have we ever touched bases with Zone A people? And when was it established, do you know? Zone A.
I'm not 100% certain.
Okay.
That sounds about right. In terms of outreach, in 2020, our goal was sending letters out to Zone B. And we've received the most contact from residents in B. We haven't received nearly as much outreach or input from residents in A. And in 2008, I believe we did the proposition 218 for the entirety of District One, which is Zone A and B. Or no, is that not, okay.
I believe we only did one B.
One B, okay, sorry.
So, so we haven't really ever polled A? And we think it started in 1990. If, is it one, I'm hoping you can answer this. Is it one property, one vote? Or is it based upon size of lot?
It's.
I don't know this, so.
So for residential in general, it's one property, one vote. But it's based on effective benefit units. So there is some commercial in the area that has a higher weight of votes, as well as apartment complexes. There is a certain amount of votes assigned to the area based on the effective benefit of those areas.
I don't want to get confused with Lafco law, but it's property owners, not residents, that are making the vote?
Yes, property owners.
Okay. This is eerily familiar to Happy Park. I know you weren't here when this happened, but that was one of the reasons why Happy Park and that area annexed into the city was because that park was, it was going bad and they needed maintenance. I, I think that, that my final, well, not my final question, but one, I think, are the districts configurable now? So for instance, could you make a one C? If you found folks within an area, I'm kind of likening it to an annexation where certain people might be inclined to pay for the services that are, you know, near their property, where others may not, which is their choice. So could you make a, you know, one A sub A or something like that? If, if we went out and did some outreach and found out, you know, rather than go through a process that, you know, we would assume might fail, it would seem to me to, if we could carve out areas that were their support and maybe target those, is that, is that legally possible?
It is, but it's very complicated. And you'll likely have to go through the Prop 218 process for that as well.
Well, so much for that. Okay, it, to me, you know, if we were going to do one, it just makes sense to take a look at both. Otherwise, you know, again, we're just going to have this equity thing, right? Where, where some people are going to be getting the landscape maintenance. And I'm going to ask, you may know, but I'm going to ask Diana, don't we have this issue on Walton Avenue too?
So the issue on Walton Avenue is when we annexed that area into the city, there was a maintenance district that no longer exists. So, but one of the complaints that you'll hear from property owners down there is that it is their belief that it's the city's responsibility to maintain the landscaping on Walton Avenue and also on Bog Road west of Walton Avenue. And so that's, that's even a complaint we heard last night at the neighborhood meeting at the park, is that's the city's responsibility to maintain that landscaping. And when residents would reach out, we would tell them there's a process if you want to establish a district and to set the fees. But it wasn't initiated by the city. And when that, that district by the county basically went defunct, is my understanding.
We got, we got three areas, it sounds like. Or, or not. I mean, that's an area that's, could be a lighting and landscape maintenance district, if they wanted it.
It could be. I would keep probably that one separate from one A and one B. And the reason being is that that Walton district in some areas, people have tried to take over because the landscaping might have been actually on their property through an easement. They've put openings in the block walls. That one requires more work to establish what the actual right-of-ways and improvements would be. We'd basically be planting all new landscaping in those areas. And so if we were going to pursue that, I would do that one separately from one A and one B.
If we were going to do one, I'd be inclined to, if they, if we get that far here at the DIAS, I would say that if we're going to do A, excuse me, if we're going to do B, we should probably try to do A as well. Why wouldn't we?
Through the mayor. Josh, I didn't hear you say the response cards that we received at the neighborhood meeting.
There were, yes, there were 21 response cards received from the meeting. 20 out of 21 were in favor of pursuing a proposition 218 to adjust the rates upward for higher maintenance.
I just think the timing right now, et cetera, I think it would be good just to take a look and see. It would, it would probably be worth our time as a city rather than dump, a bunch, dump's the wrong word, invest a lot of money in a process that, without having some reasonable knowledge of what the outcome might be. Just a thought.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
Thank you for that presentation, by the way. And I would like to commend the folks that moved this process forward. I was at that, that meeting. And I agree, when you provide food, people do show up. And a lot of them showed up. I showed up a little bit late. I was there about halftime, and I heard the whole gamut, you know. And I heard, it's fine, it's fine the way it is. And I heard, we desperately need help. And there was, there's this underlying perception from people that it really kind of surprised me that they were kind of getting picked on because if they go up north to Stabler and Peas, it doesn't look like it does down closer to Shanghai and Garden. Those of us that walk or ride in that area, railroad, it, it, it needs help. And one of the gentlemen, I think staff handled this very well. One of the gentleman's ideas, like, well, why don't you just get volunteers to do it? And I, it took everything I could to say, when do you start? But I didn't, I didn't do that. I do have a question about the block wall because I got hit by that. Not, no pun intended. Isn't that, if somebody hits that block wall, isn't it on their, their responsibility, their insurance to cover that?
If they have insurance.
If they have insurance.
It depends upon their limits.
Okay, so it, it seems to me that this has been a recurring problem at that corner, then?
At which corner?
Well, we're talking about the block wall at Shanghai and Garden, right?
That is a portion of the district.
Is that what you were referring to when you said block wall?
That, the block wall that goes the entirety from probably Shanghai all the way to Lincoln.
Okay.
And on railroad.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate the staff's effort on this. And I wholeheartedly support anything that gives our community an opportunity to step forward and improve the appearance. Because I, I believe it adds to our quality of life. So thank you.
Through the mayor. Thanks for everything you've done. I'll keep this very brief. I agree with everything that's been said so far. The one thing that I would do is keep the actual voting and such separate, not do all of District One, A and B. Because we don't want the north end or the south end telling the other end where you get to the resentment as far as, we don't want it, so you're not getting it. So if one B is looking like it's good, then let's, let's give those folks down there a chance to have their voice heard and have the assessment done to that. a chance to have their voice heard and have the assessment done to that, and then let's take up 1A, so.
It's probably the motive behind Mark's question about, have we reached out to A yet? We'd hate to have that be a surprise to them, and they, they vote the whole thing down. But I think also the benefit, probably to combine the two, is we're paying for 218 once instead of twice.
So-
Through the mayor, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
We are legally required to do them separately, because they're two separate zone districts.
Well, that's-
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Let's answer our own question. Go ahead. Go ahead, Josh.
Um, yeah, like Shannon said, two separate zones of benefits, so they're paying separate rates, so votes in B don't affect A, vice versa. If you'd like us to perform outreach with Zone A, we'd be more than happy to start polling.
Well, it sounds like if they don't have a COLA, a TikTok, right? We'll be the same spot. So, while the iron is hot, it might be a good idea to do that, at least keep the outreach going, give them opportunity, give them a heads up. We can use B as a good example. Hopefully, it'll be a good example as to what we're doing, so I'd be in line with that idea as well. Oh, we never got Mike back.
Excuse me, can I get clarification, please? So, what I'm hearing is to proceed forward with doing additional outreach in districts 1A and 1B, and then based upon the feedback received, we would come back to council in terms of a recommendation as to whether or not we move forward with a 218 process. But that additional outreach is going to be basically sending additional notices out to property owners within both districts, going through the education process, and then getting that feedback, so that we have some idea of what their desire is to move forward. I just want to make sure we're on the same page with that.
Um, it sounds like we're further along with B, and we're just starting with A.
Well, I, I heard with B that we want to do that additional outreach, because we had about 50 people there, and there's 1,800, Josh, how many homes are in that? There's 1,800 properties within that district.
Okay. That would be beneficial, then, to get the word out there. And that, basically, that could be the beginning of outreach to A, I'm assuming, we, we get out there. So, that is in line with what I heard. Gentlemen, good? All right. Are we good?
We're good. Thank you.
All right. And do we have any public comment on it, by chance? No? Okay. So, if you can go get Mike, or she's doing that.
Thank you.
Shannon, I have another question. Based on the, the chart we saw up there, it, the, the amount we were taking in immediately was behind the curve. So, is it, do we have to raise the rate to what it would, what would pay for the services at that day? Or can we ask a little bit more to kind of delay another ask later on?
If we put, if you bring it up to the current dollar amount of whatever that service is going to cost you, and then add a COLA, then you're good to go. It automatically adjusts forward.
Okay.
So, even if it's $100,000 a year, and you put in a COLA, we don't need to use that $29.95 marker as a start.
It automatically just goes up.
It is cost.
All right, good. Thank you.
Oliver, if I could clarify, one of Josh's options was to actually set the rate higher than that, so that you can start to create a capital reserve. And I think that that's your question, is can you set it above what the current escalated cost would be? And that would be part of the 218 process. We can, as long as we have information to support it, an engineer's report, we can put forward whatever the proposed B would be.
Okay. Yeah, that's another good option. As long as we, the COLA, I think, is the key, is, is we don't, we don't start immediately regressing from day one, and it just moves up as needed.
It's the first rule of holes. You know, without a COLA, we're digging ourselves in a deeper hole every year.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. All right, now we got item number, and welcome back, sir. Number 11, Boge Road Sewer Extension Project. Sounds exciting.
You know, this one is exciting. The, it's a big, a big milestone here that I'm gonna talk about for a moment, is that, so what's in front of you is the Boge Road Sewer Extension, approval of the plans and specifications. And so, this has been in the works. We've programmed money in our capital improvement plan, and then recently with the Newcombe Ranch DA and amendment, we've worked in partnership with the developer to prioritize improvements on Boge Road, to help advance that development, and also use ARPA funds, because this is a key line to really provide for development as U of City grows. And so, as we reach capacity with our existing lines from the sewer plant to the west, this is a critical line on Boge Road, and then ultimately gets under, goes under Highway 99 to the west for the, the Lincoln East area, and then also the future northwest of U of City as we, as we build more homes and grow. We need to get the sewer to the, to the wastewater treatment facility. So, a big step here tonight. What we have going, we've broken this project into multiple phases. The sewer line is a big job. It's, it's, you're gonna see some of the estimates, five to $6 million here. And so, we've broken the Boge Road improvements into multiple phases, where the sewer's gonna go in first. It's about 20 feet deep, double 18-inch lines, and so, and then with some critical timing with the ARPA funds, we want to move forward. We've been prioritizing this to get this done first. Just a quick exhibit, what this scope is, it's basically from this east edge of Highway 99 to connect into the existing facilities at Railroad. There's four key segments. There's a lift station, that basically, with it being so deep, because what you want to be able to do is, is have that, that sewer flow from your northwest, your western parts of the city in gravity, as far as you can, or to reach as far out as you can in a gravity situation. It's, it's deep. You have the gravity sewer from Newcombe, and then we'll also allow for the Newcombe Ranch development, so from everything from Stewart Road to flow north up to Boge Road. And then you, there's a future master plan sewer, so there's double 18-inch lines, and then future sewer for existing homes. And then we're also putting stubs to the north, so those areas that are currently in a keyhole, that, that if those areas decide in the future or mandated through regulation, or for whatever reason, that we're not digging up Boge Road in order to connect those to the sewer. So, there's basically four key items, and then in the bid schedule, we're breaking that out, so then, based on bids and where we land, we could come back to you with an analysis and a recommendation. So, the current schedule is to award, or advertise in October, award in December, and begins construction as early as spring of next year. Funding, funding is definitely, it's a moving target with some of these lines and some of the, the depth of the work and the soils. I mean, it's high, it's expensive, and so it's above some of the original estimates. But where we're putting that in, we're, we're putting it into the bid schedule, so then we could analyze it and figure out how it's gonna get paid, and then work through developer costs with impact fee costs with, and then ARPA funds, what we can. But it's a critical line, really, for the city, as the city continues to grow in order to get the sewer to the west. And so, once the real numbers come in and they're analyzed, we'll come back to you with a recommendation on how to proceed forward. With that, staff is recommending you, council, consider adopting a resolution approving the plans and specification and authorizing advertisement for bids for the Boge Road Sewer Extension Project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Ben, just a question on the stubbing of the sewer line to the north. Is that just a, basically, a T pipe fitting, or you actually extend it out, out from underneath?
It gets a little more complicated, believe it or not, because of the sewer main, or where the sewer lift station is, it's at Phillips Road, because you have all this sewer coming up north as a gravity, and then you have the sewer coming across the highway. And so, this is a really deep sewer line, and then you gotta, and then you're gonna pump this double 18s over here, so it's a force main. And so, in order to stub it, we have to do some lateral lines, and then we want to set them at a depth that could help facilitate the future here. And then, just how far do you go? And so, this keyhole's a big area, it goes quite a ways north, and, and it costs money. You know, if you want to set it at 20 feet deep, that maximizes your depth, how far you could gravity feed down. But at the same time, that comes for a cost that maybe might never be reimbursed. And so, we look at that, and so I think where we've settled right now, we've kind of split it, is we're setting it at this mid-depth, which provides us about half the keyhole for ready access. But at the same time, if those areas do come in, they would have to put a small lift station in, or they're gonna have to do a different engineering design at that future. And so, instead of throwing a bunch of money, we don't know if it's ever gonna get used or utilized at it. We're trying to, like, put, put some thought into it. We don't want to dig up a road. We want to have that option for the future, but be realistic a little bit of how we spend it.
The, the northern half of the keyhole, they could, in theory, potentially hook up from the, from there north? Instead of, does it all have to be down here?
I don't have the full map in front of me. I mean, I mean, Lincoln Road, there's currently lines at Lincoln Road, and there's a lift station there. And so, but we definitely, from Boge north up to, it's my cross streets, Richland and Lincoln. And then you also, we want to make sure there's, for the Silver Ranch area, you know, on the west side of the keyhole, on how they could come down and connect.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else?
Great idea with the stub outs, Ben, because I know I've experienced developing stuff, and having a stub out already there makes projects go so much smoother than they have to. As a matter of fact, the one at the school that they did your stub out, you didn't know you had a stub out there. The only reason why I knew there was a stub out is because I knew the guys had dug it.
But hopefully, hopefully, we get it documented, so we can find it.
Yeah, documented, because that's what they didn't have, was the documentation, so. Thank you, Ben.
Gentlemen, good? Public comment? All right. Uh, what are we doing? We just need a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the plans and specs and authorizing advertisement for bids for the Boge Road Sewer Expansion Project.
Second?
First and second, to approve staff's recommendation, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed. Passage unanimous, we thank you very much, Ben. Last business item is the Nigar Katan Seek Parade.
Evening again. Not a whole lot to report. We've received the security plan. I talked to Mr. Tiara this evening. We have a meeting tomorrow. He hopes to have the insurance certificate. To me, we can't get that anyway until the last 30 days leading up to the parade, so not too concerned about that, but everything else is on track. Staff went out last weekend and delivered door-to-door the passes for the Quell Point neighborhood, the neighborhood that's gonna be shut down for a period of time to resident-only traffic on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Very positive feedback from those folks. Happy that we came out door-to-door to kind of explain the process, and that we're not gonna be keeping people out of Grandma's 80th birthday, and we'll use some common sense and good judgment to get people in and out of there. And the rest of the notices have gone out to the impacted areas, with some more notices being hand-delivered to another area out in District Two this week as well. So, are there any questions that I may answer?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Chief, one question. I understand that there's gonna be posted no parking along 20 this year on the event, and with the intent in, in towing, if people-
Yeah, well, we're gonna have some education and enforcement parameters in place that day. Last year was the first day that we've seen that in my time here, being a part of this event, so we'll fix that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well said. Any events? All right. I know I spoke with the president today, too, and he assured me things are going quite well and progressing along, and they're working. He specifically mentioned the efforts they're making on clearing out trees and whatnot to have more parking available for folks. So, it sounds encouraging. So, thank you very much, chief. Appreciate all your work. Any public comment on the item? Nothing? Thought I was gonna forget, didn't you, Shannon? Yeah. Any future agenda items? Any future agenda from the public? Nothing? All right. Move on to reports and communications, beginning with our city manager.
So, just a couple of events on October 26th. We have, the PD has their trick-or-treat event from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's also the community cleanup at the old Kmart site. And then, in terms of Measure D, we have, we'll have a booth tomorrow night at Lloyd Park from 5:30 to 6:30. Thursday night at Hillcrest Park from 5:30 to 6:30, and Saturday at the north end of Western Parkway from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. So, thank you.
And thank you. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency meeting, along with councilperson Kirchner. Really, the, the big, the big items here were just a continued report out on, on the projects they have going on, and one of them involves the Shanghai Bend area. And I know that, I know Wade's a little bit more knowledgeable about this, so I'll say that for, for him, he's been involved. Councilperson Pasquale and I attended an ad hoc meeting this morning in regards to the Life Advancement Center. You know, more to come from that. We had, I believe, all, most of the stakeholders in the room, and I, Mike might want to expand on that as well. I, I wanted to take a moment, I've received several inquiries, you know, typically, I would probably do this, but because I'm getting questions about it, there are some, some, I guess the best words, allegations of an unbalanced budget that has been passed by, by this council since, since 2019. On that council, beginning in 2019, Mayor Harris, Vice Mayor Shaw, myself, you know, in the six years that we've had an opportunity to pass a budget, it's been balanced each and every year but one. The one year that it was not balanced was the COVID year. And you might imagine why it might not have been balanced there, because we were sort of in no man's land, wondering, you know, what our revenues were gonna be. We knew we had expenditures. But we, you know, with staff, our staff stepped up to the plate mightily, and we quickly got right back on track and have a balanced budget every year since then. So, again, the allegation is that we have not had a balanced budget. That is, in fact, not fact. Thank you.
It's amazing how that stuff gets said when it's so easily rebutted. But, anyway. All right. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. This month, or last couple of weeks, Gilser was canceled with mosquito. They're starting to wind down, because the weather's starting to get cooler. They, we approved three, three trucks for use for the, for the district. We also had the quarterly review of the district's benefit, defined benefit plan. And that's really the only action items to report. With, with Sabufka, the, the project that hopefully is forthcoming will be the West Feather River Channel on our side of the river, but on that side of the levee, between the boat ramp and Shanghai Bend. And in the state of California, it's, when you get to the waterways, it's all about salmon, 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 salmon. And so, a project that Sabufka is currently working on right now, that is kind of the precursor of, of what's gonna happen over here, is called the Robinson Riffle, which is an area of the Feather River, south of the city of Oroville. And this was an area that was very well, very much impacted by the dredging and hydraulic mining. And what they're actually doing, believe it or not, is they're actually gathering some of the granite and the tailings and placing it back into the, the river channel, which, which would sound kind of, kind of crazy. One of the questions that was brought up was, does it put added pressure on the levees? It does not. It gives the salmon a little bit more space and room to do what they need to do to repopulate their populations. So, I, I don't know if we're gonna see quite that level down here, because they're a different elevation than we are down here in the valley. And lastly, the vice mayor and I attended the, the Mayor's Cup Game, which was, which was fun and exciting. That was my first time on council, attending the game, and being on that field, when that trophy comes up, it is a big, big deal. And so, I was just honored to be a part of that, and that's my report.
All right. Mr. Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended my air quality control board meeting last week. Not a whole lot to report, other than the Sacramento air quality, I think- Not a whole lot to report, other than the Sacramento Air Quality, I think we're in District 9, has amped up their hiring, so they're going to start enforcing a lot more in the, in the area with as far as air quality control and the such. We're in a pretty good spot from what I understood from the report, but they're adding more people, so just beware, friends and family, don't, don't make dirt and dust and smoke. Also attended with Mark, the ad hoc for the new, new thing, new project that Habitat is, they have purchased their property. It was good to get all the stakeholders there so that everybody knew what was going to go about, and the Habitat could clearly hear the city's concern and the business owners down Pluma Street. So with that, I'll complete my report. Thank you.
All right, very good. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Kind of like falls, kind of a transition, so like others, Gilser was canceled, county oversight was canceled. We did the youth commission interviews, that was a fun time. Great kids coming onto that. We'll be bringing those forward, I think, next meeting or the following. The mayor and myself had the park ad hoc committee with the members that was on that, so we'll be bringing forward the suggestion for the, the park there on Pluma Street in the next few weeks, so we'll get to work at that. Let's see. Participated in informational meeting up at North Ridge Park yesterday evening, got to visit with some folks there, and I felt that that was productive. And then, Mr. Mayor, thanks for giving me the honor of doing the coin toss and stepping in for you at the mayor's cup. That was quite an honor, and I want to say to both of the schools, Yuba City and River Valley, the city's very proud of both of the schools. They represent this city well, and both teams played their hearts out, so it was a really good game. And congratulations to Yuba City as they became the victors that night, but really, really a good game, and I will leave it at that.
All right, and thank you both for stepping in for that. Family obligations took me away, so I wasn't able to go. Sounds like it was a good time. I have down here youth commission interviews, as vice mayor already stated, we interviewed, as always, some really good young people that want to be a part of their city, and it was a pleasure to appoint them. We'll hear more about that later when we approve that. Regarding SECOG, the, what they call the Sustainable Community Strategy, it's moving forward due to a deadline or thing that was adjusted by the state. There's a couple options, because the deadline only, for completing that plan, will only apply to this plan, it didn't kick everything out, out in the future. And so we, we had to start out with three ways to respond, options how we, how we move forward regarding build-out of housing and roads. So entities request roads, you're adding lane miles, which is going to affect GHG emissions, but you don't want to stick it out too far because then you're going to affect housing opportunities and walkability and bikeability. It's a whole really complicated, interactive recipe there. But the two options that we've had, we're going to move forward, was one is a 0.4 gap between where we predicted we would be as far as the greenhouse gas emission reduction, and the other one was a 1.4% gap. Pretty obvious which ones makes the most sense, but the fact that there's a gap alone is concerning because being able to meet those emissions goals is definitely tied to receiving state funding, so more, more to follow on that. As already stated, Gilser has been, was canceled this time. We had a meeting regarding the park on the south end of Pluma Street. There's many bullet points or many things that we are going to discuss in the future. Josh was there and ran the meeting, did a really good job. We talked, we discussed the name this last time, and the next topic, I believe, will be the murals that will be going up on the east wall of Bleese Canton. Saw some renderings and some options and some images as to what that area was going to look like, and it definitely looks really beautiful. It's going to be really nice for the city. And then also attended the, the quarterly update for the film commission meeting. We've already budgeted our, our 6,500 for that, and that's, and that's good, and we've got a good, solid investment. They, they came with some figures for between Yuba County and Sutter County, oh, just shy of $1.6 million introduced into our local economy because of that. There were one feature film and several, at least a half a dozen others, short films and independent films, along with more commercials and whatnot filmed in our area, which also, hotel rooms alone was over 1,100 hotel room night stays. Plus everything else, the food and the employment opportunities, and it was just a good thing. So doing the math as far as the tax on that money that we received and how much of it was spent in Yuba City, I still have, struggle with getting the detail that I would like to have to bring back here for their presentation, but they're going to do the best they can to show us what the ROI is. There definitely is one. So more to follow on that as well. And I believe that is it for me. So unless we have anything else, we're done for the night. Thank you very much.